A special meeting of the Willits City Council for September 26th order and we all rise to join Mr. Hornstein. In a pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dorn, I remembered. Kathy, who's here?
Okay, councilmember.
Yes.
Strong.
Yes.
Madal.
Here.
Hornstein.
Here.
Mayor Burton.
Here.
So, it looks like the first item is to see if anybody wishes to amend the agenda to bring in a discussion and a possible adoption of a resolution on adding signage, requesting additional signage from Caltrans, I assume that is.
Yes.
And then also another resolution to participate in the Sonoma Clean Power Authority Act.
Should we do these one at a time or as a group?
I'd also move all of them.
I'll second.
Yeah, we have to amend the agenda first.
Yeah, well, that, it's moving to add them to the agenda.
Right now, we have a motion to second to add both items to the, there's three.
Three items.
Three items. Can I second?
Well, the third item is.
Related to the second.
Related to the second.
Correct.
And I'm sure we'll learn how shortly. What is the, I mean, these are here because they're urgent and cannot wait till a future meeting, what's the, does anybody explain to me the urgency of a signage?
Yes, I'd be happy to do that. I brought that because I believe that in order to have an additional sign at either the north or south end of 101 approaching Willits, that Caltrans needs a little bit of advanced time and they currently are not planning to do any additional signage. So I think it's time urgent to put the request in so that there is a reasonable chance they could actually get signs up in time for the opening of the bypass. And I think every week that goes by without proper signage is going to hurt our businesses. So it's time urgent in order to get that request in to Caltrans in a timely way. Want me to speak to the other one, too?
Well, let's try that one for just a second because that doesn't, I don't know that that, to me, passes personally the smell test of urgency relative to, you know, bypassing the regular public notice period and all for the public to participate in the discussion. The issue has been out there for a long time. I mean, it's not something that just.
It just came to my attention.
I understand that, but.
Yeah.
I don't know what other people think. I don't know that there's so.
Well, the issue, the problem I have with this is it's not really specific on what the resolution would be. I mean, you know, what the outcome would be, you know, add signs where, we still have to tackle that. Even if we approved, in principle, the idea of adding more signs, I guess that's not a bad idea, but where they are and what they say, I think these are details that would need to be worked out.
It is in the results clause.
Well.
So the question is whether or not to add it to the agenda as an urgency item. I do have some thoughts on it, that if we add it to it, I could bring up at that point, but it seems like Bruce, to address your concern, we could add it, but not necessarily take an action on the resolution if the council felt like the community needed more time.
Well.
But your concern is that it doesn't meet the urgency standards?
I don't think it meets the urgency standards. I mean, something that goes on the agenda in emergency is a $200,000 pump at the sewer plant that is blown up and raw sewage may go in the creek next week if we don't replace it. Those are, those are my idea of an urgency item and I'm sure that there are many others. I don't think that signage, additional signage is, just doesn't, I mean, Caltrans is going to, you know, it's going to put up, it just doesn't meet any sense of urgency. I get, I think I get the idea, but I just don't buy that that meets the criteria for an emergency item on a council.
I wanted to suggest that we have Dusty come up and speak to this because I know that the Revite Ed Committee has been working on this issue.
Well, let's just see if, that's just my personal opinion, it takes a four-fifths vote if we have, if we have a motion and a second to add these three items on there to it, let's.
Could we vote on the, this one and then?
Well, the maker of the motion amend that to just item seven and we vote on it and then we're going to item, the second, amend the second to that. Okay, let's do that. So we're just going to consider adding the signage issue at this point.
Could I just ask a quick question? Maybe Dusty knows the answer, and that is, how long does it take Caltrans to order a sign and install it? Don't know. Okay, I'm sure it's a matter of two weeks, I'm sure it's more than that.
But I just, I'm sorry, I just want to, before we vote on this, I just want to add that the Revite Ed Committee has been working on this and we have been in constant communication with Caltrans and they have said that they did these ones, which we saw what those are. And we all agree that we need more, but we've been told multiple times that, you know, that it's going to open in November and they will not be putting up new signs before the opening. This is my understanding. So I think that they very well could use urging to, you know, because they've talked to us about the other signs that we can have, but, I don't know, as far as the urgency thing, I don't think we're going to get them to put up new signs before the end of the month. I get that.
So, roll call vote.
Councilmember Stransky?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Madal?
Yes.
Hornstein?
Yeah, one.
Mayor Burton?
No. So it passes four fifths, just what it needs.
So it's added to the agenda.
It's added to the agenda.
And then why was this other one, why is it an urgency?
There is a deadline of Friday, September 30th, for jurisdictions to adopt a resolution and introduce an ordinance to participate in this program. And so we had, we received a presentation back in April from Chris Shaver of the county and honestly, this sort of fell off my radar screen and I learned just today that about this deadline, was reminded about it and so that's why this is being brought forward. It's not something that we're obligated to do, but if we want to do it, we need to take some action tonight.
Okay, I'll move that we also add eight and nine.
I think that was part of Larry's motion and my second.
Well, that.
Could I just speak?
We amended that motion, let's just start over.
Okay, well, I'll second Holly's motion. And I just wanted to add that apparently if we don't get in by this deadline at the end of this month, that instead of becoming, going online, you know, becoming effective in June of 2017, if we miss this deadline, it would not become effective until June of 2018. So it's a long delay.
I think it's worth a discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Yes. Councilmember Stransky?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Madal?
Yes.
Hornstein?
Yeah.
Mayor Burton?
Yes. Okay.
And that goes for eight and nine.
Yes, that's my assumption. So we will go back then and take up item two, which is a discussion of possible action to deny a claim received from Debbie Madison.
I'm removed for the recommended action.
Seconded.
Yes, do you have any?
Yeah, I'm just curious why this wasn't on the consent calendar, because we don't have a consent calendar.
Special, at special meetings, we don't take up routine business.
These rules, okay.
I confess that the photographs are not very clear, but I get the idea anyway.
Another motion and a second. Do we have any, any discussion on this, any public comment on this item? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Stransky?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Madal?
Yes.
Hornstein?
Yes.
Mayor Burton?
Yes. The next item is a discussion of possible action to adopt a resolution authorizing the tow and removal of vehicles found to be in violation of emergency temporary no parking signs posted in accordance with municipal code 1032.070. Adrian, do you have, want to fill us in anymore on that or the public get on that?
So this is from the police chief and over this Fourth of July, we towed a couple of vehicles from Madden Lane, Madden is typically no parking, along with a few other city streets to accommodate for staging and for the parade. And in going back through the records, we were not able to find some of the enforcement resolutions and so this is really an effort to make sure that we have all of the i's dotted and the t's crossed. And so this would, we would post temporary no parking signs as well as towing and removal of vehicles to be found in violation. And this basically gives the authorization to do that.
I have two questions. I assume that in addition to the emergency no parking, there is also one, in the ordinance, a regular no parking.
That's correct.
Okay, so that part is covered.
Right.
And the other question I had here is, this calls for towing of the vehicles, is there a fine associated with this?
Well, it's the towing fee that the owner is responsible for.
Okay, but there's not a, an illegal parking fine or something like that?
I don't know, they're, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Doesn't say it in that.
No, it didn't. So I'm just wanting, you know, curious if that is part of the thing and if it's also part of the regular, you know, the regular thing.
Well, we do, we do collect parking violation fines.
Okay.
So it would stand to reason that this would have that as well.
Okay.
I think our police chief.
Do we have to put that in then? I guess it would be my other question, does that have to be included?
Let the, let the city attorney worry about that, what do you think?
I was just going to add that I know some people that got caught up in the Fourth of July, you know, towings that happened in the past and they felt that it wasn't, you know, that 24-hour posting, you know, they didn't feel like it was adequately out there or whatever. So I think anything we can do to make that more clear will be good, but Ron, it is, you know, the towing fees are not cheap, you know, to get your car back, it's not a.
No, I'm not advocating, you know, slamming people, but I'm just curious if it's part of it.
So the intent of this, Holly, is to definitely make it more clear. The vehicle owners that had their vehicles towed did appeal and it was in that process that we realized we didn't, we couldn't find the records to provide the full enforcement.
Got it. And I'll help spread the word if, if indeed you can't park on Madden, you know, for the Fourth of July, I can help get the word out in the neighborhood not to do that. Bruce?
Yes, Peter.
Yeah, well, two things. One is the recommended action, it says the no parking signs would be during unplanned special events and I'm assuming if you have to post 24 hours in advance, it is a planned event. What was the intention of saying unplanned events?
I think that addresses when we have some construction going on and vehicles have to be moved or, you know, not, not parked where they normally do.
Well, I mean, the Fourth of July is pretty planned.
That's a planned event, certainly, but we do have some unplanned events.
Okay, well, maybe it should say planned and, and emergency or something, but it's not only for unplanned events. And then on the resolution, I would like to make it clear that the date and time of the event shall be noted because it's not necessarily just a whole day. And then the sign should also say that vehicles will be towed at owner's expense so that they know in advance that that's what's likely to happen to them.
Question on that, Bruce. When you're doing repairs, if that's, if that's part of one of them, you have no idea what you're going to get into. And so to make it from 8:30 till 12 is really not a good thing. It's easier to say from 8:30 till 4 or 5 o'clock when everybody's through because once they start digging into the grounded, whatever, they have no idea what they're going to come up with. So it's easier to do it that way than it is and then say if it's done in a half a day, just move the signs and you're done.
Yeah, I know, I just didn't want it to just say July 4th and then, you know, somebody thinks that it's going to be eight in the evening and they still don't, I don't know, I, as much specificity as appropriate. But not limit, yeah, you're right.
I would move we adopt a resolution authorizing the chief to cause the recommended action.
Any public discussion on this? Any more discussion up here? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Madal?
Yes.
Hornstein?
Yes.
Mayor Burton?
Yes.
We'll pass along those comments.
So now we have a similar item in the adopting a resolution authorizing installation of a fire lane in towaway zone on city property access lane between the rodeo grounds on East Commercial and Valley, Center Valley Road.
I'm not really clear on exactly where this is. I looked at the map and I'm not sure I'm seeing it.
Well, it goes in right next to the, obviously right next to the first gate into the rodeo, or the second gate. Goes around the east side of the rodeo grounds and exits on the Valley Street by, what's his name, Lee Grant.
It refers to parcel D-073102 and I couldn't find that parcel on the map either. So it's just that the map isn't particularly.
Let me, well, it's.
It's number 16, right here.
Oh, okay.
16 and 3.
Oh, okay, ah, 16 and 3, that was formerly the Hathaways. Okay.
Sneaky little.
Thank you.
That little.
Thank you.
So my question is, in the past, I know, I know the property owners have used that area to park in, you know, during the other times of the year. Is there a concern that during other times of the year, they wouldn't leave that as a fire access?
We actually have issues throughout the city where we have alleys, for example, that do provide emergency access that are being blocked by either vehicles or fences.
And have we contacted the two property owners on either side of this and did they give any feedback?
Well.
I think it's new property owners on the.
Right. Jerry would be the one that had that contact.
Okay.
Well, I think it's Carl's feeling that that access is being impeded and it's important access for emergency vehicles, I think we have to.
And that is not a private road, right?
City property.
City property, okay.
City property. I just, I've spoken to some of the property owners that use that and they'd always felt like they tried to be good neighbors and leave, you know, not have it clear. It is a floodway, I do know that, you know, the, when, if the water starts, kind of starts flooding, it definitely goes down that area. It's probably good to keep it unobstructed.
Well, the reason this is being brought to the council for this action is because we haven't received a level of cooperation from some property owners as what, as has been requested and so there was a need to formalize this.
Okay, I'll move staff recommendations.
I'll second it. Any public comment on posting a fire lane? Posting a city lane as a fire lane? No parking? Any more comments up here? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember.
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Madal?
No.
Hornstein?
Yes.
Mayor Burton?
Yes. So now we have, looks like we have an opportunity to accept the construction completion of the Main Street Waterline Replacement Project Phase III, contract number 2016-01, authorizing the filing of the Notice of Completion. I think everybody read that.
Yeah, I will move the adopted resolution, second.
I have a question.
Sure.
Go ahead. Suzie, how come we used 214000 account to take the money out of instead of some of the others in the water department? I'm sorry to do that to you, I should have given it earlier. It, what it is, it says plant replacement parts and equipment and I just wondered if it was because of the amount of money that's in that particular division or is it actually fall underneath that?
It's because they think that's where they can find additional funds.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question and it's probably just a technical question and this, this could just be a standard boilerplate, but in the second paragraph of the summary, second sentence, it says, "It has been completed in substantial compliance with the project plans and specifications." And the word substantial, I mean, is that, is that a word that's always thrown in or?
Yes.
Because it sounds like it's incomplete or it's kind of okay, you know, I mean, is that, does it mean what it sounds like it means?
No, I don't think so, but that's just standard language for these types of notices.
Okay.
And it really has to do with, because we have to file the Notice of Completion, I mean, it's possible that we could discover something.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
After, you know, we file this, it needs to be addressed and, you know, that, that happens and.
Okay, this does shut the door.
Right, exactly.
But it does, it does pay them their holdback, 10% or whatever.
It is that.
This release, I mean, that's what you're doing is. Is, was there one, is it a bunch of little things that made the change orders, the $88,000 or whatever in change orders?
Right, we had, there was an incorrect calculation done on asphalt and so we had a bit of negotiation with the contractors to get the remainder of the work done within the budgeted amount and that was primarily what drove the change order, was additional asphalt.
That's a lot of asphalt for a two-foot wide trench on Main Street.
I do want to add though that this is a huge deal to be having this complete. I mean, we were losing a lot of water through old leaky pipes and this project has completed at least the Main Street section, which is going to pay off on water savings.
There's no doubt. Depleted our savings, reserve account then. Hopefully it'll keep the reservoir full.
Yeah.
So it'll sell it.
One of the factors in the incorrect calculation.
Thank you very much.
Part of it was, was an error on staff's part in calculating it, but then Caltrans required that we do six inches of asphalt and that was not part of the original estimate.
And they're using a millimeter or something?
Exactly.
And they want to use two inches for.
And I also want to add that when Scott and Carl went out and did the fire flow test last week, excellent results.
Good.
Will this allow the school to decommission their?
Yes.
$300,000 or whatever it is.
Good. So the water is done? Do we have any more water lines?
Oh, we always do.
We got a lot of things.
Well, yeah.
Sorry, excuse me. What year, does anybody here know what year that the line was from Boskerville, not Boskerville, where the tennis courts are out to the end of the city limits? When they did that? Was that done in the 80s or 90s or does anybody know?
We might know.
Okay, that's all I need to know. I'll ask Scott, he'll know.
I know we did, redid the pump station out there at one point, but I don't, might have been a sewer pump. Okay, so there was a motion and a second?
Who was the second?
Do we have?
Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I was motion, Matt was the second.
Do we have any public comment on this waterline project?
Could I just, I also wanted to mention also, do we have sort of before and after data about, you know, how bad it was and how much improved it is? That'd be great.
It's always terrible.
I know, it was terrible. I just, data that shows graphically.
It's always a little harder to quantify than you hope it will be. Roll call vote, please.
Yes, councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Madal?
Yes.
Hornstein?
Yeah.
Mayor Burton?
Yes. The next, next item is item six, which is a discussion of possible action or direction to establish a structured process to allow council members and the public to provide input regarding marijuana cultivation and distribution or whatever it is, going to be within the city of Willits, move an ad hoc committee. And, you know, upon my reflection of assigning this project to another ad hoc committee, I think it's important enough to the community and I think it's, deserves a full public vetting of, in order that we get the best input we can all through this process. So I, I would have suggested that we do this in a series of meetings, you know, not to make every.
Every meeting a cannabis meeting.
Every meeting a three-hour cannabis meeting or pot meeting, but to take whatever time it takes and take it in at 30 minutes at a time, you know, start out by asking, getting a general set of parameters of what people think they want, have the city, or have the city attorney bring back some sample ordinances and dissect them here for a period of time. And when our time period's up, we move on to other business and we will reconvene and discuss it the next week. So that's what I'm proposing to offer for undertaking this effort to, to create a new ordinance to replace what we exist, we have in existence. Yeah?
Yeah, I, I'm just curious as to why an ad hoc committee is not the appropriate format, because ad hoc committees can be and should be open to the public anyway. And in experience, you know, this is a question, this is an issue that needs a lot of detailed talk, there's a lot of details involved with this thing. And, you know, these are things that are better handled in a more intimate setting. When we sit up here and we have, you know, a 30-minute limit per meeting and when a speaker stands up there, he's got three minutes, you know, there's five people sitting up here and I'm pretty sure that every one of us is going to have a five-minute. up here, and I, I'm pretty sure that every one of us is gonna have a five-minute, um, comment. So that takes up to thirty minutes right there, and we're not gonna be able to even hear from the public, much less have any kind of interchange of ideas. It just doesn't work in this kind of environment, but it certainly does work in an ad-hoc committee. And when, when, when I first proposed this at the last, or two council meetings ago, I proposed an ad-hoc committee, and my vision was that it would be something like, um, a congressional hearing room, if you will, you know, where you have the, the committee sitting, and the audience is there, they're close by each other, it would be in a more intimate setting, and just a free flow of ideas, because there's a lot of information that we have to get back and forth. Um, and I, I just can't see it working in open session. Besides, if we're looking at, well, next, the next council meeting, um, and this is also the logistics of the thing, the next council meeting, um, will be in, in, what, October twelfth, right? And I believe we will not have a full council at that meeting. That's right? Then the next one after that is the twenty-sixth, and we will have a full council, so that's one meeting. And then we get into November, and the November ninth meeting is a full council, and there is no second council meeting in November, so the next meeting after that is the December meeting, when a new council will be seated. So basically, from tonight on, we have two council meetings in which we can discuss this thing over a two-month period. And I just think it's too, it just takes too much time, and it's just too awkward. We need to do this in a committee that can be working between the council meetings. And if it's tying up, I realize it's tying up staff's time, but I, I believe that it can be set up that staff can come and go, you know, as they need to, as their duties require. They can come in, they can make, you know, lay down some information, or whatever is needed by the committee, and then they can, they can go, or we can make assignments, and people can just scamp around. It's a lot less formal that way, and I think it would work a lot better, because I'm very concerned that we do this the right way.
Well, I've sat on lots of ad-hoc committees, and I've sat on a lot of standing committees, and I've listened to a lot of decision-making in here, and, and I believe that, that we will have a more thorough and clearly vetted ordinance if we do it with five people weighing in on it than two, so...
My whole thing is that I just want to have some action. I mean, I, I know about the glacial pace of, of politics, and that, that's how the sausage is made, and I get that, but I also want to see progress happening, whether, whether the council is supportive or not supportive, I just wanna see progress. Um, I have received public, uh, communications from people in the public that wanna weigh in, you know, that say, "I have information that I would like to share to the council, and I have knowledge that I, I could contribute," um, and I've had to let them know that we're still figuring out what our process is, but that I'll keep them informed. I do think it'll be tricky if we, I'm not tied to either route. I mean, either way, we all need to review it, either if it's in an ad-hoc, or if it's not, but if we choose to discuss it at the full council level, I would hope that we could actually do our homework and read the drafts, come, come prepared with changes. I would love to have, you know, I think staff has some ideas of some policies that have worked in other areas, um, if we could give them direction, you know, maybe we could come up with something in two meetings. But my, my main thing is progress. Either way, I think that we can get the public input and make it happen.
Yeah, I agree with Ron and Holly, and that we, we have had several public hearings
and have heard a lot of talk, um, from the public about the general policy direction, and I think what we need now is really nuts and bolts of an ordinance, and, um, there are some options there, but they're nuanced, they're not just, um, are you for it or against it, it's exactly, how do you structure it, and, um, I think that that's very well done in a committee, and a committee that's open to some public participation, yes, but I think that that homework and that honing, a proposal to come to the city council, and then at city council, we can decide policy, are we gonna do A and B and not C, or are we gonna do all, whatever, but, you know, have those options worked out in committee. So I really, I think that, um, it would not be all that efficient or helpful to do it the way you're proposing, Bruce, and I also think it would really not be fair to the public to come to a series of meetings and say, "Oh, you're, you're, we're at thirty-one minutes now, you have to come back two weeks from now, because we just ran out of our thirty minutes." I mean, when, when we come up to a decision-making, um, meeting, then that's when you wanna have a full public hearing, and let those who are concerned have their say. So I, I would like us to get ahead with a, an ad-hoc committee that is open to the public, that is charged with actually proposing some specific ordinance language, and, and move ahead quickly that way.
I, I think that Ron's, uh, part of it about having the ad-hoc committee is the best way to do it, because I think that the community wants to, there's a lot of talk out in the community, and believe me, it's a, it's a lively, uh, group of people out there that wanna weigh in both ways, one way or the other, one, whatever, whatever way they wanna do it. But I think that everybody has a right, and I think the thing need to do it at an ad-hoc committee, where they can actually set and have the people listen to what they're having to say, and go on from there, because, um, I just think what Ron said is, is, is the right way to go with it, and, uh, and when, like, the, the, the meeting that everybody, or two people are gonna miss, I mean, this can still be going on, as long as the members are still in the, in the community, I mean, are still here, it's not two of the people that are going. Uh, I mean, you can have it, you know, once a week or something, I mean, I have no idea, but I'm just saying that we've spent a lot of time on this, and, and I've been one that has shrugged my heels, and, and I'm ready to go with it. I'm, I'm tired of, of every day somebody, uh, coming in the store and not buying stuff and just talking. Just put it blunt.
I, I would, and obviously this is, the ad-hoc committee's at the discretion of the mayor, but I would, um, be willing to suggest that Ron and I serve on that committee, since neither of us are up for reelection right now. I think that that could be a benefit.
Well, to the effect that you've got two meetings left in your tenure, and then you're, no, well, I'm not gonna, I'm not going to appoint an ad-hoc committee, so, we either can deal with it this way, or when you seat a new mayor in December, they can appoint an ad-hoc committee.
I would like to recommend that those two council members meet and, and advertise the fact that they're gonna meet and invite people, even if it's not an ad-hoc committee. I think it's a very good idea, and would move things forward in the meantime.
Well, you'd have to do that without staff, they'd be doing that without the support of staff.
I'd be interested to hear what the public has to say, obviously, there might be people who are here to speak to this, but I would also like to check with Jim, what's the procedure with this?
Well, um...
If the council wants to take an action, it's different from what the mayor wants to take.
The mayor's the presiding officer, and the presiding officer, uh, has the discretion to appoint ad-hoc committees or not, or, and if, if the presiding officer chooses not to form an ad-hoc, then I don't see that any of the remaining council members have the right to create one. Clearly, two council members can meet together to discuss, uh, city business without violating the Brown Act, but, you know, more than, more than three would have to be a noticed meeting. But I also agree with what the mayor said about, if two council members wanna meet and discuss, that's fine, uh, but it, but we probably should, um, have staff only participating if, if there truly is an ad-hoc committee meeting.
So if, if we propose...
But if we, if it's not condoned by the mayor to have an ad-hoc committee, staff cannot give them input. We cannot say, if I was on the committee, and it says, "I need to know this, this, and this," and I was gonna go to somebody on the staff, they can't give me an answer for it, because as a, as a non-person, just as a council member, I can't request them to do anything for me.
That's right, that's right, because you work as a body.
It's deadlocked right there.
Well, Ron or Holly would have every right to research other cities' codes, and come up with, with codes that they think are, are good, that should be followed in Willets, and they can do that research on their own.
Jim, can't, um, I mean, it's, the staff works at the, at the direction of the council, not just the mayor, so can't we, as a council, direct staff to provide some?
No.
You know, support to, uh, council members who are working on a, on a volunteer basis to?
No.
No?
No, it's, it's in the, it's in the code, it's, we cannot, Adrienne and I've had quite a few discussions on this, and, uh, you're dead in the water, believe me.
I really want Jim to answer that, because we have directed staff to do research on things before, uh, as a council, and, okay, the ad, the title ad-hoc committee, apparently we can't say that, but can we, uh, ask that staff respond to questions and provide information?
Right there.
Right, but that's, that, that is, as an individual?
No, as a council member says. If you're, if you're a council member, and the, and the mayor does not condone this, it's just four council members trying to do the job that they can't get any staff to help them do it.
But this is regarding going around...
Madge, what are you referring to?
Well, I'm just saying...
I mean, what's the document?
Oh, yeah, okay, well, I believe that refers to, I believe, is...
It says chain of command, it's two-point-oh-eight-one-four-four, chain of command, and in here it says that, uh, that the mayor has summarized a report, whatever, it just says that, "As a council member, I can't have anybody, I can't go to Dusty or to somebody and say, 'Would you give me some information on this, because this is, this is what I need in order for me to fill out what I need to know,'" and the number is two-point-oh-eight-point-one-four-oh. It says chain of command.
But, and Larry, that is, that is accurate, but what Madge is asking is with a majority of the city council wanting to go a different direction than the presiding officer.
This is about going to staff under the city manager, in other words, I, I don't go to Dusty and say, "I need you to do research on such and such," I go to Adrienne, and if she, she is, no, she's our employee, and everybody else...
You know, I, I'm not quite sure why everybody's getting so...
Well, I'm just asking if...
I mean, that's fine, that's fine, but, but we have, we do have the opportunity to have two council meetings, I mean, it is, what, what I'm asking for, or suggesting is that we have a fully transparent process. It isn't, it isn't the, the most expedient, probably, it's not the fastest, but I think it has the benefit of all five council members weighing in on each aspect of building an ordinance that, you know, that would have the perspective of a wider perspective than what two people have, and as individuals with an, with some particular agenda, they've, you know, what you are putting on the table could, you know, could be less well, you know, unless somebody is, is, is looking at it very clearly, they may miss something that all five of us, one of us, might catch. I, I don't understand why there is, other, other than the time-wise, and thirty minutes is a suggestion, if somebody wants that to be forty-five, or...
I would sug, I would suggest two hours.
I'm sorry, but I, I wanna suggest...
I don't wanna suggest that, because I think then it, it, nobody does more, nobody does good work after forty-five minutes or an hour.
I try to be very, um, objective and respectful. However, I was extremely disappointed when the ad-hoc committee back, um, six months ago, had nothing, no public was allowed to come to their meeting, and they came with only one scenario to the city council. They did not evaluate any other options and present them at that time. So I think homework was not done then, that should have been done.
Homework was done perfectly, but it came, but that was the whole...
And your opinion on this matter is not the opinion of the majority of the council, and I see this as foot-dragging to just, um, you know, not take action in a timely way, and I think that is, uh, you're, you're not representing the five members of this council fairly by doing that. I don't, I don't like it.
Well, I guess I'm being, I think I'm being totally responsive to the fact that we did it, you know, and brought back a recommendation that, that met with quite a fair amount of criticism, and this is my response to it. Let's make it completely open, let's not do it behind, let's, let's not repeat that process, let's not repeat, well, it's, you're asking to do the same process with two different people.
No, you were the ones that closed the door when you met.
No, we didn't.
Yeah, well, that's what I heard, there was no public allowed at those meetings.
Anyway, so I'm just saying, now we do it in public, and, and in, in two months, you, you know, you don't get where you wanna be, then...
I don't get angry very often, but this really is not fair to the majority of the council, or the public, who have been coming to our meetings and weighing in, and yes, it's a controversial issue, and yes, we know that, but let's not just drag our feet through meetings of, you know, when we come to making a decision, let's have the public fully involved and not be basically, what, put their feet in concrete because of, of your reluctance, Bruce, I don't think it's fair.
Well, I, I respectfully disagree.
I, I would just like to get a clarification from our, our council on, I assume that we are operating under Resolution Number 2009-10, which is the, um, the, for the purpose of revising and updating the city council procedures for conducting city council meetings, is that...
Yes, that's right.
So on page eleven, section twenty-six, is the only section that I saw that, that refers to ad-hoc committees, and it says, "All ad-hoc council committees shall be appointed by the presiding officer," which we have heard, "with majority consent of the council." So, to me, that implies that the council has a dog in the fight, that it's not strictly the presiding officer that makes this decision unilaterally.
Well, I, I don't think that's what it says. It says that the presiding officer shall appoint a committee with the consent of the majority, so if the mayor chooses to appoint an ad-hoc committee and suggests who's going to serve on that, it's true that the council has a voice in the boat on, on the selected members, but it's the mayor who has the authority, it's the presiding officer, to decide if there's going to be an ad-hoc committee.
So, I mean, I, I, I guess I'm still naive enough to believe that, that regulations and ordinances and laws and everything are written with logic in mind, with a reason, not just arbitrarily. So could you explain to me, in a, in a weak mayor form of government, where the mayor is, is a city council member who is selected by his, the rest of the council to act as mayor, is, and, versus a strong mayor, where the mayor is elected separately by the electorate? So, i- it's kinda curious why, how the mayor in a weak mayor model has more power than the rest of the council?
Well, I don't know about weak versus strong mayor analogies, but I'm just telling you my interpretation is...
It's not an analogy, I mean, this is the, this is what we operate on.
I'm just telling you my interpretation of the section you suggested.
Okay, fine, fine, then work with me here, because this is how we operate, we are all equals, we are five equals. Uh, the mayor does not have veto power over the rest of the council, the mayor does not have, um, well, superpowers, it's, it's just one more vote. So, for example, if one of the council members made a motion to appoint an ad-hoc committee, and it was seconded, and was passed by a vote of four to one, what would happen?
Well, that would be outside of your rules, that would be a, a motion that was made that disregards the mayor's authorities, presiding officer, to, to appoint ad-hoc committees, but I don't see, I haven't seen anything in the rules, and I, I don't know what, what section Larry is referring to, this two-point-oh-eight, that's not within these rules of procedure, is it?
It has to do with going through the line of...
It's right out of the, right out of the book.
The city ordinance?
Okay, it's not, it's not out of the city's rules that Ron is referring to, it's...
It's under the ordinance, and it...
It's the Willis Municipal Code?
Yeah. Can we just loan that to Jim for a moment?
If he gets it back, I want it back.
Because I think this has to do with council members going to subordinate staff as opposed to directing the staff in general to provide... as opposed to directing the staff in general to provide.
We have, Adrienne and I have been talked about this several times, I'll just put it that way, and I've come up with the short end of the stick, I'll just put it that way.
And I, I would like to hear from the public, I imagine that some folks might have something to weigh in on, on this, maybe not. As I mentioned, I'm not fully tied to one or the other, but this does bring up concerns about our democratic process, and from everything that I've read in the, you know, legalese of city councils, Ron is right, in the, in the sense that we have the weak mayor system, that that's the way that we do it, you don't run for, to run for mayor, you run as for city council and are appointed by the peers. Maybe it's possible that in this ad hoc situation, that that doesn't apply, but it seems like the purpose of the mayor is to adminis, you know, is to help facilitate the will of the, of the group.
I don't see anything in this chain of command section from the Willis municipal code that would preclude a majority of the city council members from making a motion and directing staff to do research on something. That's not precluded by this chain of command, I don't see this precluded by our rules, what I do see the rule saying is that the mayor has the authority to appoint an ad hoc committee, subject to majority consent of the council members on the selection of the members. So unless there's something that I'm overlooking, I don't see that you are precluded from giving direction to staff that a majority of you agree on.
So we would have to say, I would make a motion that we would, we want the staff to help the council members for whatever it might be, I mean, I don't know which orders that I need.
Which is, I mean, when they have to, what the mayor is proposing, they'd have to bring it back to the full council, you don't bring it back to an ad hoc committee, and that's what I'm suggesting.
So it sounds, it sounds like to me, one way to move forward is to do both, you know, that we will have this item as a agenda item for thirty minutes on each meeting, and that Ron and I could bring a draft ordinance, and staff could look it over and see if it made sense, I mean, that could be discussed at the.
I'm asking that this council meeting, that we direct staff to bring back draft ordinances at the next meeting, to the full council, that's, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, but see, the problem with that is, we've seen draft ordinances all over the place, and quite frankly, and I've studied most of them, and they don't seem to work for us here. I mean, what I pointed out at the last meeting is that this is, what I have found is that most jurisdictions confine marijuana operations to industrial areas, and I, and I showed a map to everybody of industrial areas in town, it was pointed out that fifty percent of, of town has an industrial area in it, but, but most of them are not appropriate for what we're talking about, in my opinion. The city of Arcata, for example, took an industrial zone that's way at the northeast corner of the city, away from everything else, and that's their marijuana zone. So I was looking around town here for a similar place, and I was only able to identify maybe two, maybe three properties in our entire town that would be suitable for that, so these things need to be vetted.
Well, that's exactly right, they do need to be vetted, and your opinion about that is just one person's opinion.
I understand, yeah.
It is not, and two people, I swear, I think it needs the vetting of five people to do that properly.
No, no, this is what I'm saying, the vetting is done with a small group, not with a large group.
Not on this issue, I just think it's a mistake.
Well, okay, I mean, that's your position on the thing, and, and, you know, obviously you're going to put a roadblock on it, so we'll just have to wait.
Well, it, it seems to me that if you're going to ask staff and the city attorney to do hours and hours and hours of research on finding, well, what, the types of ordinances that you tell us you want, you know, give against some direction, that, that ought to be, that direction ought to be given by the full council members as opposed to two.
Well, I understand that.
If two people on, if the two members of an ad hoc committee give the direction to staff, and staff follows that vein, and then it comes back to the full city council member, and then we find out that, that a majority really wanted it to go a different route, we might have been better served to first have a consensus of the entire five members as about which types of ordinances you want researched, and what types of models you want to look at.
Okay, look, this is nothing more than a project, I mean, I, I have been managing projects my entire life in the private sector, and there are ways of doing it, and you don't do it in a huge audience, you cannot have a proper discussion when you have a hundred people sitting in a room, and all you're going to get is somebody standing up there for three minutes, speaking at the podium, and sitting down, somebody else stands up for three minutes, they may be talking about something entirely different than the first person, and by the time you get down to the fiftieth person, who has something to say that has maybe something to do with what the first person said, you forgot what was said, and there's no, there's no back and forth, so there's no dialogue, it's everybody, the way we've been doing it is we make speeches at each other, everybody's up here and in the audience, we all stand and we make speeches at each other, and nobody interacts with each other, and, and, and that's the nature of, of a, of a meeting like this, where you have a big audience and everybody has to say something, and you have, you know, two minutes or three minutes to put your whole story out there and then hope for the best. In a committee meeting, you can really get into the details of this stuff, and you hash them out, by definition, no decisions are made in an ad hoc meeting, the, all the information is laid out, and then that's brought, a package is brought back to the council, and, and it's not a complete package, it's a package that then the council has something to chew on, and the audience has something to chew on, but that's a starting point, and, and, you know, I've been doing this for thirty years, and it works that way.
How do you limit the participation at an ad hoc committee?
The way you run it, like I said, I use the analogy, maybe it's a little high, high blown, it's like, like a, a, a senate hearing committee, where you have the ad hoc members, everybody sitting in a formal setting, it can either be around the table, which is, which works best for, for dialogue, the public is welcome to come in, and quite frankly, if it takes five hours, and I'm on that committee, I'm willing to sit there for five hours and listen to everybody, what they have to say, and take notes, and let's get an argument going, let, you say something, fine, you have something to say to that, and it goes back and forth, that's the way a conversation works, we just don't speak at each other.
Larry and then.
And see, and this is the example of what I'm talking about, because inevitably, when we have it in a public session, and it seems like it's going on a little too long, the conversation's going to be cut off.
Well, and it starts repeating itself for the third time, I think we're ready to hear it from somebody else.
Okay, I, to get this started, I would like to, there's been a person in the community that has tried to get his particular item on the agenda to give a, what am I trying to say, to give his project that he wants to do in the community, and it has to do with marijuana, and for a better name for it, it's called SWS, and it's at 300 East Hill Road, and this person has been trying to get on the agenda to have his project at least just heard from the, for the, in front of the council, and he hasn't been able to do that, and so I want to formally make a motion to be, have him be able to make that presentation to the council at the next meeting, or if the council's several people that aren't going to be here, made when there's a full council on the 26th, if it's okay with that person. That's my motion.
Well.
Could I hear a second?
Well, it's not an agendized, I think you can have, ask to have something put on the agenda, I think that's another set of parliamentary rules of having something put on the agenda.
The reason I am reluctant to second it is that in order for us to legally review a project, it has to be consistent with our ordinances, and right now, the project is not. And the whole point of this ad hoc committee is to look at the ordinance so that we can consider a project as being legal. If we don't have the ordinance that allows it, it doesn't mean that we have to approve it, it just means that the ordinance might allow us to, with, we meet certain criteria, and it's appropriately zoned, and so forth and so on, and right now, we are completely stymied due to one person, who is our mayor, and I, I would like to say hypothetically, if I made a motion that the council would delegate to Ron Ornstein and Holly Madrigal the responsibility to work with staff and bring back to the council a draft ordinance with several different options to consider, and to have their deliberations be open to the public, and not call it an ad hoc committee, could we do that? I mean, it seems to me this is what the council ought to be able to do, we should be able to delegate some, you know, it's nuts and bolts, writing ordinances and looking at pieces of parcel, and deciding what the appropriate oversight would be, and it's, I don't think that kind of work is done well in this format, I think it's done well in a small committee. We're not going to call an ad hoc committee, can I make that motion?
I'll defer to legal counsel, doesn't seem like you can to me, but.
I'm not aware of anything that precludes you from making that motion.
I so move. And I would, I would like their, their deliberations to include a couple different options that have to do with industrial zone, you know, commercial grows, and also, I, I would like to look at other ordinances that may allow testing labs and dispensaries as an option to come back to us with. So that's, that's the motion I would like to make, and I'd like it to be done at least for the next meeting, at which all five council members will be present, which is about a month from now.
I'll second that.
I just wanted to add that we could try, at one of, there's been a concern about people having enough time to comment, we could try self-limiting ourselves as an, as an experiment, the council, to two minutes at a shot, and then you have to let someone else on the council speak before you get here with another two minutes.
That's going to be tough for some of you, I'll tell you that.
I just think it would be a good, I, I hear often, I hear often from the community that, you guys get all this time to, you know, ad nauseam, go on and on and on, which I think is why we're here, we are here to make policy, but if we tried it, it might make it, make the public feel like they have more input.
Well, we're at that point where we're going to just ask for just that, because you guys have a motion which I don't think is appropriate, but.
It's not clear.
Well, yeah, you, the clerk says she doesn't have a clear understanding of which motion is.
I am moving that the council delegate responsibility to Ron Ornstein and Holly Madrigal to work with staff, and we delegate, and we also, directing staff to assist them as, in coming up with some very specific proposals to bring back to the council at our next full meeting, which I would call the October 26th meeting, with, including a couple different options for how to structure an ordinance on cannabis issues.
I think so.
Do we have any public comment on this discussion this evening? Yes, sir.
Thank you, my name's Bill Barksdale, I just want to point out that this discussion has taken more than thirty minutes to decide whether you're going to have a thirty-minute discussion or not, so.
Can you use thirty seconds to tell us that? So go ahead.
Thank you, and you took ten seconds of my time, and I, and I, I think what Mayor Burton is trying to do is try to create a framework where a discussion can be contained in a certain amount of time, so that with a hypothetical thirty-minute period of time, so that they don't go on for hours and hours, and you alienate the, the audience, plus, I agree that the, that the ad hoc committee of two before, which didn't come up with a very popular decision, seemed like it excluded the public, so feel like what Mayor Burton is trying to do at this point is say, let's try to find a mechanism where we can bring it to the public and have the discussion in public. Perhaps the committee that is on the table right now is trying to look into some, a way to bring something to the, the council so that, I think, something can be considered, which would save some time, and maybe that would, maybe, Mayor Burton suggested that perhaps maybe an hour limit to the discussion instead of thirty minutes might work, and maybe that's a better time period, because we're now at forty minutes discussing whether or not we should limit it to thirty minutes, my point, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
An opinion, counsel?
Howie?
I'm Troy McConnell, Willets, hello, good evening, mayor, council members, I want to remind everybody, when we had the Harwood Biomasse Plant, we had a community meeting, so, Willets has a history of when we have something big happening in the community, that we have a community meeting, which brings everybody together, so I'm here again tonight to voice my support for cannabis patients' rights, here in Willets, as well as the voice and support of the many cannabis patients in this community, can't come here all the time, I'm encouraging this council to open the subject of medical marijuana cultivation up to public discussion, which includes the majority of the public and not just the minority of counselors, not only industrial medical marijuana cultivation for a very small select few, but a medical marijuana cultivation ordinance which creates a legal permitting process for medical marijuana patients living in the city of Willets, who want to grow maybe a few plants outside, in the sunlight, not using electricity, in accordance with their doctor's recommendations. For too long, this community has lived under the rule of oppression of the many by the decisions of a very select few. This town was built as employee housing for the Northwestern Mill and Brook Trails in the early nineteen hundreds, it's housing as well as many other mills in this area. Those days are gone. Along with the loss of our redwood forests, our community has also lost those economic industries, logging is no longer our sustaining industry or our future. Climate change is real, and we are feeling the effects of that industry this summer, a hotter, drier climate. This leads us to encourage and develop other unique industries, and in fact, the cannabis industry has long supported our, saved our communities in the logging boom and bust after World War II and into the nineteen seventies failed. As we are now considering marijuana industries, why are we not first looking at ways to support our own community's cannabis patients' rights? Rather than creating special zoning for out-of-town cannapreneurs wanting to grow high-carbon footprint marijuana lights, we should be looking at ways to create marijuana tourism, cafes and dispensaries, as well as co-ops, which represent our uniquely rich marijuana heritage and culture. Time to stop the oppression, and ti, find, time to find a new way to make this a better community, which represents and supports personal liberties, personal freedoms, and of course, the rights between a patient and their doctor. Thank you.
Thank you, Troy. Anybody else?
So take the three minutes and see what happens. Good evening, city council, city staff, and the community of Willets, thank you for the opportunity for me to speak here tonight, my name is Kevin Shu, I represent SWS Consulting, which is an investment group who recently purchased the former AMD building, I'm here to speak to you about our vision of prosperous partnership with the city. Cannabis is the fastest-growing industry in the United States, with estimated a hundred billion dollars in consumer market by 2029. Currently, twenty-five states with capital Washington DC have legalized cannabis for medicinal use, and four states passed a law for recreational use already, with five more states voting this November, of course, that includes California. And we're here to invest in Willets, and to grow with the city for the long term. Our plan is to invest north of thirty million dollars in the city, this will create more than a hundred and fifty jobs for the city, of which at least eighty of, eighty percent of them hire locally, I mean, where else can you find more human resource talent than right here? This will also create additional sixty-plus indirect hires right here in Willets. In fact, due to our wishes to prosper with the city, we will also keep all construction jobs and build-out jobs in the hands of local contractors, and we have already done that for our Phase One construction. Our plan is to contribute five dollars for every operational square footage to the general fund of the city. With our current building alone, we can already contribute more than two hundred thousand per year, and if you give us the chance to expand together, we can possibly contribute more than one point two million dollars to the city per year by 2018. We want to make sure we're leading by example in this city, and also in this industry. Our facility is secure. hub for this booming industry, like Champagne of France or Napa Valley of California. Whether the people of Willets see the same future, more importantly, see the same prosperity for future generations to come is the question and your choice. But should we at least be regulating this industry to leave this option open? I just remind you, the industry is not waiting for any city. I mean, you see San Diego, you see Fort Bragg, you see Oakland, all jumping ahead. I just hope we can have some action going before it's too late. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thanks.
Anybody else? Second, third and last call? Yeah.
Good evening, council members. My name is Joshua Bakatosh. I was hired by Mr. Shi to represent the environmental sustainability aspect of the project. I was going to come up here and speak on the technical aspects, but I don't think you guys are prepared to hear that at this point in time. So what I'd like to say is on a personal note, the reason I got involved in this industry is because my mother had breast cancer and she ultimately died from this. I witnessed chemotherapy, I witnessed the things associated with that, and this is the one medicine that weaned her off morphine and onto a compassionate death. So I'm involved in this industry as well for the cannabis patients' rights. It is also a for-profit industry that I've witnessed councils and other cities expand their general fund from, which Mr. Shi has proposed. At the point in time when the ad hoc committee comes, we've set up what's called ESHA, it's Environmental, Social and Health Impact Analysis, and we've done gaps associated with that. So as the gentleman mentioned on the carbon footprint, we look to minimize that in partnership up with the local community. So when the ad hoc committee or however you guys deem that best to handle those regulations, we look forward to presenting it. And on another note, I've been involved on the federal side for the mandatory reporting rule of greenhouse gases on Quado that, that regulates upstream oil and gas for the first time in 30 years, and you guys have a very challenging job ahead of you. So respectfully, I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anybody else? Yeah.
Thank you. I'm Tim Blake. Going on and watching the past several months and years, going to city council meetings and board of supervisors and meetings, I have nothing but respect and applaud you for being civil servants and doing all the time, energy, how much it takes. Last week, watching you guys spend hours on a very critical aspect of the downtown and how the roads are going to affect people and all the time that it takes up and what you guys, you know, do, I just applaud you for what you guys contribute to our community. And I thank you for having the courage to take this up because it is a very challenging thing. It's divided my family over the years, you know, I have brother-in-law as Captain Watsonville PD, I have cops, I have lawyers, I have different people that are divided by this. But at the end of the day, we have to move forward and this, this is where the industry's going. This is where our country's going. This is where the world is going. And I thank you guys for having the courage to be able to, to look at this. I know Mayor Burton, you personally have had real issues with this. A lot of things are like that, whether it's, you know, civil rights or gay rights or any rights for women back in the turn of the century. These things are all have to be pushed forward. You know, cannabis has had its time to be, you know, bedeviled and looked upon as such an evil thing. You know, that, those days are over. Well, you've heard enough. You guys all know about the medicinal effects and all the rest of it and the possibilities for this town. I've watched this town suffer for so many years, you know, and we've already heard it. The rest of this state, the rest of this country is embracing this and Willets needs to do this for its own survival so that people can have jobs and we can fix up the roads and we can get the community put back together. Task be done in the right way and I have the utmost confidence that you guys will figure that out. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments. All right, can we, one more?
I have a speech, but I left it in my seat back there because I don't think this is the right time to cover everything that I have been down. But I do remember biomass plant for Red Road Avenue. Just came to the city and the city said no. There was a recycle plant supposed to be down the street on Peter Koch's property. The city council said no. So my question is, what has this city been doing to encourage new industry to come in and to employ people and to pay taxes and to, to possibly give the city and its people more opportunities? Or do we just sit there and whenever they come in, you just say no? You know, we're doing just fine. We don't need anything else. We have the Rimco building is empty, AMD building is empty, Peter Koch's building is empty. We have vacant industrial land created by the annexation in 1980s. There's nothing happening, okay? So if there is an opportunity and we can do it properly with proper regulations, with input from the community, to, to make sure that it does not damage as bad as the sawmills did when they were all over town, okay? There was no, there was no rhyme or reason to that other than who had enough money to put up a sawmill? And was it next to your housing neighborhood? Could be, probably. A lot of them were. So we have an opportunity here to go through this particular item, which is, which is here. We didn't invite it here, but it's here, okay? And we're not the only place that's here. We're not, we're not re, you know, we're not inventing the wheel, okay? It's, it's happening all around us. So I think the motion that's made, that's on the floor, is an excellent motion to get things moving so that the dialogue can start so that at some point the city can say, we don't want to do this or we only want to do these portions with these regulations. We'll look at the possibility of testing labs or, or dispensaries at a later date, but let's confine it to this and discuss this and come up with something and see if that works, okay? Based on what Mr. Shi said, $200,000 to the city general fund based on the $5 a square foot, that's one building. There are more buildings. So with that specific project right now, we can wait a long time, but I just did the math, it's only costing the city council $4,000 a week to not have an approved project. Not a month, not a year, $4,000 a week, $200,000 a year. So my suggestion is you don't take all the time in the world.
Anybody else? Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Can you read the motion please so we know what it is?
Delegate, delegate Councilman Ron Ornstein and Madrigal to work with the city staff to bring back proposals and a structured ordinance on cannabis to the, at the October 26th council meeting.
Okay. We'll have a roll call, but I, I still don't think it fits the, it quacks like a duck, it walks like a duck.
I don't know how the, how the association of two council members is anything different than an ad hoc committee. And the authority of the mayor is to, is to form, create ad hoc committees and not of the general council, but there's nothing in the rules that I've seen that, that prevents a majority of the council members from making a direction to city staff that they perform some assistance on a project.
I think this would be likely worthwhile because I, I mean, my sense is that this is a totally appropriate quasi-legislative thing to do. The mayor's sense is that it's not an appropriate action, so I would recommend if this motion passes that Jim, you check out the listservs and ask the city attorney network to just verify that, that this is not...
Improper or a little...
improper or certainly, I don't, I don't believe that it's, there's a legal issue, but if you could check that out for us, that would be good.
Certainly, certainly. The other, the other concern is that it's, it's very broadly worded. You're directing these council members to work with staff to come back with an ordinance on marijuana.
Not an ordinance.
Or a recommendation of...
Well, no, the way I see it is...
Come back with examples of ordinances.
No, no, no. The ordinance is way down the line.
You didn't make the motion, Ron.
Isn't that what the city clerk just read? To work with staff to come back with examples of ordinances on marijuana? And it's not very clear whether, are we talking about commercial grow operations? Are we talking about backyard marijuana? Are we talking about...
Well, that's the point. And since it was suggested that I'm one of the members, I'm not looking to bring back an ordinance. That, that's further down the road. I'm looking at a checklist of considerations that have to be considered by the council so we can move forward. This is going to be taken in steps. I mean, for example, it may very well work out that, you know, with our discussions, we may decide that marijuana is not appropriate in this town, that we're too small, we don't have an appropriate place to, to do this without impacting the public, and that might be the recommendation. I'm not predicting anything. All I'm saying is, is we have to go through the process and that's all I've ever asked for from day one.
Yeah, all I've asked for now is that it be a fully vetted public process and you want to do it?
No.
With two people and have a selective, you want, you want to...
No, that's not true.
Sounds like it.
No, I am not, I am not advocating a closed meeting. I am advocating a small working group with public participation. They're not mutually exclusive.
As maker of the motion, I, I was hoping that there would be very, a specific proposals coming out of this little project, if you want to call it a project, that would, would say we can, we can do kind of like what you did a month ago when you brought this to the council. We can do just A, which would be, A, first we could say what the previous ad hoc committee, no, none, never, ever, anything. We could say only what we now allow, which is indoor grows with, I think, six-plant limit. Or we can go to industrial zoned, commercial grow, which industrial land is appropriate. I'd like a very specific direction on what the options are. And I think as a...
And don't you think that needs to be vetted to the five council members?
It does. And it does it in a public hearing with proposals that, that give you something to work from, not just air, not just, you know, my philosophy is, it's not about philosophy. If, if we're going to actually allow certain things in the city's ordinances and zoning, we need to be very specific about what those proposals are. And we're, we may not be at the point of drafting the ordinance yet, but we have to be moving that way quickly and efficiently with those options laid out. And a committee is the way, we're not going to call it a committee, a working group is a way to, to, to come up with that kind of relatively specific guidance. Then as a councilman, council, the full council, with public participation, we can say, we like A and C and D, but we don't like B and we don't like E. So let's go back and do an ordinance for A, C and D, you know, whatever it is. But we, we have to get there and a series of half-hour public hearings or even a series of one-hour public hearings isn't the way to get to that level of proposal.
The motion that's before us is different than how you, what you've just described.
Yeah, I actually said some of that when I made my motion, but I think Kathy simplified it, which is okay with me because I think that the members of the council here, I think Ron and Holly will take into account these things that have been brought up today as well as a month ago, and we'll come back with some, something meaty that we can work with. I, I'm trusting...
So the, the motion is to bring back something meaty we can work with.
Oh.
Have we had a vote?
Do you want to, do you want to say the motion?
If you want to say specific, specific options for cannabis regulation within the city.
Yeah, that, that's a better...
Roll call, vote please.
Okay.
Yes.
Strong.
Yes.
Madrigal.
Yes.
Ornstein.
Yes.
No. Okay, we'll move along to our, who knows how, it might be more entertaining to be listening to Channel Four tonight. Hard to second guess.
That's why we get paid the big bucks.
So now we have the issue on, did we, did we agree to do this? I can't even remember.
Yes.
No, the, the sign?
Yes.
Did that meet the, did that get support?
It would be four votes to be added to the agenda.
All right. So now we're going to talk about signs.
Thank you.
So I know we started this, but I don't know if we could have Dusty update...
Go ahead. Dusty?
Because my understanding was that we have encouraged Caltrans to put additional signage and that there is a process...
Yeah, yeah. Councilwoman Madrigal, you are correct in your discussion with the council earlier in that we have had interaction with Caltrans staff and made them aware of various types of signage that were interested in Caltrans establishing on the highway for the benefit of the city. Not only do we talk to them about those service signs, the service signs where it says gas, lodging, and that people can buy their logo, whether it's Best Western or Chevron and, and put it on there and, you know, but we're also looking to establish other types of general highway signage as it relates to letting folks know that the museum's off the next exit or the Vietnam War Memorial. We're also looking at establishing additional signage that says Willets X miles ahead. Not only 101, but also 20, letting people know that, you know, when you come into town that, you know, downtown Willets is to the left of you. So again, looking for opportunities to, to create that wayward signing, you know, within the city, both on the highways and our local streets. Regarding the, specifically the logo signs, my interactions with Caltrans staff, I was made to understand that we will have those types of signs at our Southern Interchange.
There is one there already.
The general sign...
The sign that shows the off-ramp to Willets.
But you're right at the, you're right at the turnoff.
Well, that's true. It is.
But that's not the logo type sign that he's talking about.
No, no, no.
We were also looking to establish what, you know, you're, you're aware of in the, that logo type signage and it's, it's staff's understanding that they will be installing those at the Southern Interchange. And there was a technicality is why they weren't planning on installing those at the Northern Interchange, although I think staff's been able to provide them with some logic to where their own rules would point to them to, to establish that signage at the Northern Interchange. I recognized after talking with Mad and reading the article in the Willets paper that, you know, that signage hadn't been installed yet. And so apparently I made the assumption that that signage would be installed prior to the bypass opening. I called Caltrans staff as recently as today, seeking clarification on, on that exact matter and haven't received a callback yet. But, you know, essentially, Caltrans has established all the signage that they're required to establish by law. And in, in talking to their staff with these other types of sign requests, their staff will consider them after the bypass is open and all the established signage has been completed. So apparently there's a number of rules that relate to distance between signage. For instance, on the Vietnam Memorial, they're going to want numbers as far as the usage and how many people, I guess the popularity of the landmark before they'll establish signage for us. So, so apparently there's, there's, there's some conversations that need to happen, but to say the least, their staff is abruptly aware of our requests to have them come out and do that evaluation as soon as possible, you know, with staff. So that's, that's where we are right now with our dialogue and establishing highway signage and not even to get into the civic billboard type of specials and all that.
Because I certainly, I mean, I think we all agree that we want to have adequate and attractive and informative signage on the, on the highway. But I just remember you, I don't know what the purpose of the resolution will be if we're saying, you know, the city resolves that we want you to do this before the bypass is open. I don't think, I don't know if that'll get us anywhere, is, is my point. I absolutely agree that we need to stay on them and make sure it happens, but I don't know if it's going to happen in the month. But, I mean, I'd like to hear what the other council members think about doing a resolution and if they think that will be helpful with the Caltrans process.
Well, as I mentioned before, I mean, I'm in favor of a resolution that would get more signs, but it seems to me that we probably should be a little more specific, what signs we talking about. I mean, if we throw this out to them, they're allowed to put signs wherever. That'll do us no good. So I, I mean, I, I wouldn't be opposed to seeing this again with a little more detail.
Larry? I think, to be specific about it, I think we need a sign at, not right at the entrance that says this is Willets, but I think there's 14 miles between the last sign that says Willets is 14 miles to Willets. There's absolutely nothing and the first sign you come across coming... Well, as I mentioned before, I mean, I'm in favor of a resolution that would get more signs, but it seems to me that we probably should be a little more specific, what signs we talking about. I mean, if we throw this out to them, they're allowed to put signs wherever, that'll do us no good. So I, I mean, I, I wouldn't be opposed to seeing this again with a little more detail.
Larry. I think, to be specific about it, I think we need a sign at, not right at the entrance that says, this is Willets, but I think there's 14 miles between the last sign that says Willets is 14 miles to Willets. There's absolutely nothing, and the first sign you come across coming down the hill is says Highway 20 Fort Bragg. It doesn't say Willets, it says Fort Bragg. Then when you're at the turnoff going down the turnoff to turn off to Willets, it says Willets off, and that's it. I mean, you've got to have something, someplace along the line that says in Willets, that we have service stations, we have restaurants, we have all of these other things. I mean, for Caltrans just to say, you know, Willets, when you're turning off and your dog has got to walk out there someplace, is not enough for me. And if Caltrans wants us to do something, we need to do it. Or if we need to stand in the middle of the road, then we need to do that also. We've got to get their freaking attention, okay? That's my interpretation of it. And I'm tired of Caltrans dogging it, and you can tell them from me, I'm tired of them dogging it. And I think the council feels the same way. We're tired of it.
Madge?
Okay, first of all, I, I like the idea of additional signage with however many logos and the county museum and the dog park and, we have so many attractions and so many gas stations and restaurants and motels that those could be negotiated, you know, that's going to take a while. And then Caltrans is going to make money by selling, you know, people's right to have their logo. But the gas, food, lodging and services is something they have on highways all over the state. And you need more than 50 feet to be prepared for that is coming up. And as Larry is pointing out, right now, 14 miles out, there's one that says, Willets Crescent City and Eureka, or whatever it is. It's like one of those that you don't really pay a whole lot of attention to unless you're saying, oh God, it's a long way to Crescent City, you know. But then you don't see another sign about Willets until you're on the exit. That is not only inadequate from Willets' perspective, totally inadequate, it's not even safe. Because if somebody does want to go to Willets, they might be in the left lane there and suddenly go, whoa, this is our exit. You know, it's not even safe from, from Caltrans' point of view for serving the vehicles that are, you know, safe exit. So I, I'm just saying at a minimum and quickly, ideally, before the bypass is open, we want one of those generic ones that says, gas, food, lodging, services, next exit, two mi, Willets, next, you know, two miles. And approximately two miles, the actual location would be depending on where there's a good spot for the thing. But, but that's pretty specific, Ron, as to what I'm asking for.
Yeah, all right.
The additional signage, it's going to take a while. But if we don't get a fire lit under them now to do this now, that could be, you know, six months or a year from now. I don't know how long it's going to be. The minute that bypass opens, our businesses are going to start suffering, you know. And I don't know how much they're going to suffer, but having no signage for the existence of Willets and the fact that we have all of these wonderful, you know, services available to, to the passerby tourist is not going to help us. It's going to hurt us even more. So this is just the minimum that I think that Caltrans should be obligated to do, which they do all over the state on their highways and their freeways, saying gas, food, lodging, Willets, two miles or approximately two miles ahead. And so I think it, it doesn't hurt to have the, the word of the council, formal resolution, to go to them with and say, you know, we, we feel really strongly. This is going to hurt our businesses, it's going to hurt our city revenues. And this is the least you can do at the opening, you know, before you open the bypass. And then afterwards, yeah, let's negotiate, let's have all sorts of other great things.
So you'd be willing to take off the county museum part of that?
Yeah, if, if they're going to have another sign later.
Since we know that that is something.
Okay.
Also, and I think.
Yes, I would be willing.
I apologize, I think Dusty mentioned this. We also get to have a monument sign for Willets. You know, it can't say all the stuff that we have, but it can say, you are now, you know, you are now passing Willets. And we can have that out there in the right of way. We get like a one off for that.
Yeah, I know there's some details.
There's definite rules about what you're allowed to put on there and what you're not. But I, I mean, I'm thinking of like Scotia has one, you know, I think like when you're going past there, you know, like you're now going past that area. So I could see maybe this resolution with the two miles south of Willets saying, Willets, two miles, you know, suggesting that, that seems within, I don't know if they'll do it, but that seems within the scope of something that's reasonable to ask.
And take out county museum, because that'll be on a different sign?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm, I'm fine with that. So I'll make a motion to that effect.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any community comment on this?
Thank you, Dusty.
I agree that the, it's not just that there is a sign 14 miles south of Willets, it's the only sign that says Willets is coming up. Every other sign between the Bay Area and that sign 14 miles away says Eureka Arcada. Doesn't mention Willets ever before you get 14 miles.
Neither on Highway 20.
Yeah, or Highway, yeah. I, I agree with the, I think it's the 50 square foot sign, those signs that tell that there are services. Maybe the sign that's two miles away, I think it at least has to mention something about gas, food, lodging, and the things that people are interested in to make them want to pull off the highway, like our hospital, for instance. People who are on the road and are having medical issues, if they know that there's a hospital here, that's important information. If they know that there are other, you know, besides gas, food and lodging, that there, certainly, you know, a place to stay, the campground. I think that we can have a charging station or something like that here. But just to let people know that there's a reason to pull off here. And Highway 20, which might say coastal access, Highway 20, that gives a little bit more information that makes you want to pull off here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yeah, I've, I, I see, you know, I'm not sure exactly what the actual wording should be, but I certainly support. I've, I've struggled with this issue with Caltrans on a number of, for a number of different times, you know, on, before the, long before the freeway. And this whole notion is, you're absolutely right, 14 miles just north of, you know, just in the neighborhood of Redwood Valley is the first mention you ever get of Willets. Whether you're coming from the south or the east and coming from the north, it's, again, it's 13, or it's nine or 13, I can't remember. But it's, it's south of the, of the Covelo Road turnoff. And, you know, I guess my, the counter argument to it would be is that we're probably the last generation that is going to use highway signs to get where we're going. So.
Unless your cellphone doesn't work.
I think that, I think that, you know, but I would challenge him to use that argument in this case. But the fact is that that's probably the case. So I, I think it's still a little lucy, lead worded, but I'm not interested in trying to wordsmith it myself. I think it's mainly to put that message to them that we're looking for something advance, in advance of, of, something that is already within, I, I'll have to look, I have to admit that I don't, I know how to get to Willets, so I often don't look at the signs. But if you tell me that the only sign out there is halfway down the off ramp right now.
At the off.
It's right at the, you're turning off and going down.
Anyway, I believe you, you know, I, I, somebody's done that, I believe him. And, and I think that that's probably an inadequate.
Can I have one thing, and if this is okay with you? Since we're, since we're putting this, basically what's a standard sign, we're asking for them to do something that they have sitting somewhere and, you know, having Willets on there. But could we add hospital to that? I mean, just, it seems like gas, food, lodging and, you know, the H.
I think the hospital thing is a really good idea. Very good.
Just the H. Yeah. Well, I mean, just since we're going to ask, like, we think that we need this sign before.
Yes.
I mean, are you open to that?
I, I just don't want them to start saying.
They're not going to do anything, so I mean, do whatever you want.
Right, so let's ask, let's ask for the hospital.
I want there to be some relatively good hope that this is feasible and that they might even consider doing it. Because I do think that there, a later iteration, we're going to come back and want to have, you know, the county museum and the hospital and the dog park and, you know, all sorts of wonderful attractions that we have here. And we're not going to get.
Holly, what, excuse me.
Gas, food, lodging, hospital.
What was this, they are allowing us a monument sign, what are you talking about?
Cities are allowed a monument sign, but they cannot be advertisements, even if it's for nonprofits such as The Chamber or other groups that don't make money. You know, we're not allowed to say Frontier Days.
So is this a sign like what we already have at the three ends of town?
I believe so, yes.
That we could put that.
Yeah, we can be careful because.
Bigger.
We can only have one gateway monument sign in each direction, so we want to be careful how we throw that wording around. Monument picture becomes real important in Caltrans eyes. But one of the advantages of this, this gateway monument sign is, like other civic type billboards, we might want to try to advertise the dog park and the museum and Roots of Power, et cetera, et cetera, scum train. You know, the Caltrans regulations limit us to placing that new billboard in certain zonings, specifically industrial and commercial zonings. And there's some limitations on the number of properties that carry that zoning along the freeway between Ukiah and Leightonville. So one of the advantages of calling it an out, or a, excuse me, a gateway monument sign, is that that zoning doesn't come into play. And Caltrans will allow you to place that sign actually within their right of way property, regardless of.
There's something like that south of Ukiah, right? Isn't there something on the east side?
Yeah, yes, on the, well, I'm thinking of the one on the north side, before you get to the North State Street exit there, where you're looking up kind of Reddymire Road and there's that, welcome to the city of Ukiah sign or something like that. That would be.
Keep my eyes open.
And there probably is one at the south end and I'm just not, you know, picturing it in my head.
Near Ravino's.
Yeah, that's correct, right. And, and Councilwoman Madrigal's correct in that we're limited on what that sign can say. So it certainly can say, you know, city of Willets, gateway to the Redwoods, you know, can't say, city of Willets, please get off the highway and shop at these locations.
Can't have a scrolling thing like behind the.
But we're not letting go of that for other areas.
Behind the home plate umpire and Giants game.
Right.
Okay, well, I think we got, we need what we need to know here. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, can I clarify? In this first paragraph, you're doing gas, food, lodging, are we taking off shops? Are we leaving that in there?
The first paragraph, this, Madge, this is up to you, but I think that that was sort of staying the same. And the change was in the now there for it part, that we were going to take out county museums and other services.
Okay.
And put in hospital.
So it'd be gas, food, lodging and hospital.
If they could fit in other services, I'd be happy, but, you know, I just want them to get a decent sign up before you get to the exit, that lets them know there's something going on here.
What about an historical mark of the birthplace of Holly Madrigal?
Probably have better chance than getting council approval than Bruce Burton tonight.
I have to have a certain amount of Facebook, Paul.
Yeah. Actually, on that first paragraph, the whereas, I would like to add the hospital there.
Poor Kathy, thank you for putting up with.
Okay, and then on the now there for be it resolved, we're saying, Willets, two miles, gas, food, lodging, hospital, other services. If hospital, if it's possible to put that in a sign that's sort of still the generic.
If they have that sitting around, they might.
Yeah, and if it isn't, then they'll, they'll edit it for us, but we can ask.
If we don't ask.
All right, roll call vote, please. Yes.
Strong.
Yes.
Madrigal.
Yes.
Orinsting.
Yes.
Marburg.
Yes. All right, we got one more, essentially one more item on our agenda this evening, which is whether to sign up with Sonoma Clean Power Authority as a community choice aggregator on behalf of the city and implement a Sonoma Clean Power Community Choice Aggregation program to the city of Willets. And then follow up ordinance that would do that.
I move the recommended action for both items eight and nine.
I'll second that.
I have a comment. In the second paragraph, and I'm looking at the one, the, the resolution requesting the Sonoma Clean Power Authority Act, Community Choice Aggregate, et cetera, et cetera. In the second paragraph, third line, it says, well, the sentence says, customers who do not wish to receive power that has been purchased or generated by Sonoma Clean Power may opt out and continue to receive power purchased by PG&E. Now, this opting out clause kind of troubles me because what that means is that you will be signed up with Sonoma Clean Power unless you take, make the effort to opt out. And this happens too often, you know, when you get a, you get a, you know, a three month subscription for free HBO, and then you have to call them and say, I don't want it anymore. Otherwise, you continue to get billed for it until the end of time. So this opt out thing, I think a lot of people are going to miss that and they're going to, you know, they may not want to have Sonoma Clean Power. They may want to have good old PG&E, and if they don't opt out, they're stuck with, with that. So I'm a little concerned about that.
And that's, you know, they, they admitted when they were here, that's very clearly part of their strategy.
Yeah, yeah, obviously.
Because if it's an opt in, they don't get near the participation.
Well, if this takes effect to Willets and we approve it, will there be a notice in anything that says it's time for you to turn in your form that says that you do not want this at your particular house?
I wouldn't bet on it.
I'm asking, Angel.
Yeah.
There will be.
There will be.
This is a countywide, this is basically a county initiative that they've been rolling out and, you know, going to different councils, council meetings to make presentations. The purpose of this tonight is there, and, you know, my apologies for this being an off agenda item. This is something that fell off my radar screen and I was reminded that there is a deadline of Friday, September 30th, for us to sign up to essentially provide this option to our residents. Residents can opt out, the city can opt out, we can, you know, as a customer ourselves, we can opt out. But to participate in the program on, you know, essentially open up the franchise, we do have to adopt a resolution and, and an ordinance.
But in answer to Larry's question, will the public be notified that they have to opt out if they don't want it?
They will absolutely have to be notified of that.
And who would do that?
The Sonoma Clean Energy would.
Oh, so they have a procedure for that?
That's my understanding, yes. But I also don't think that that precludes the city from.
From taking additional measures.
Exactly, we can, you know, post it on our utility bills, put it on our website, send out, you know, standalone notices.
Because that was the thing that, that troubles me, I mean, if we take, and I'm not opposed to this thing, but I, I don't want to obligate the citizens of this community to have to do this if they don't want to and if they're not aware that they cannot, you know, they can opt to not do it. So I, I think we, we would need to take some special steps or whatever, you know.
I would agree. Just for clarification's sake, I want to say that we don't have to participate in this. If we choose not to take action tonight, we would not, the service would not, the service options would not be available to our residents in June of next year. We could, at a later date, decide to sign on for this and then just have a later date of implementation within the city.
So, so just for a quick synopsis, and since you're the one who brought this, I mean, you can explain it, what's the benefit?
The Sonoma Clean Power Energy is generally, and I think consistently, less expensive by a small amount than PG&E. And it gives you more local control over where you source your energy, your electricity from. So they are trying to, and Sonoma and Menzino Counties both are trying to encourage more local or regional production of energy so we don't have to buy all of our power from, from PG&E. PG&E still provides all of the distribution system and these people still get their bill from PG&E.
Get through the water.
So it doesn't, you know, it doesn't change any of that. So it, it has the advantage of more local, regional control over your energy source and it's generally less expensive than PG&E by a small amount.
How does the control, how does the control work? What is the mechanism?
That is.
There's a board, I saw this board or something, is that?
And remember from the presentation, and that's one of the things we could do if this passes, is when it's, when it's opt out time, we could have them come and do a presentation again at the city council so that people are clear on that, whether or not they want to be part of it. But I believe it was a board that's like done in Marin. But I believe it was a board that's like down in Marin area or the area.
Sonoma, this is Sonoma and Menzino.
Each of the jurisdictions, local jurisdictions, would have seats on that board. So the council, if you adopt this, will.
One for cities and one for counties.
I was misunderstanding that this.
They want to represent the county, one seat to collectively represent Willetts, Fort Bragg, and Point Arena. So it'd be one for the three cities, or four cities. Oh, Ukiah doesn't.
I'll fall under the purview of the city select committee.
Probably would.
But I do, I appreciate Larry's point that it would be good to go above and beyond as far as notifying people what their options are. And the reason, one of the reasons why I support this is because generally, I support more options for our citizens, you know? If we don't do it, then they would not be able to be part of it for some time. So that's why I support it.
Well, I think it's, I think it's complicated. This field's complicated. It is, you know, it reminds me of a couple of things. It kind of, one, it reminds me of Blue Shield and Blue Cross. It's kind of that game of hide-and-seek that goes on between those two entities. And it's, you know, PG&E has, somebody, somebody found a little flaw in their system that where they were billing, they were billing their cost of electricity at cost and charging, making their money in the transmission business. Or no, at the first, they were, they were making money in the, in their, selling and making their electricity and just kind of paying their way in the transmission business. And then, then other people got in the business of making electricity, and they thought, whoa, you know, now if we have to pay what we pay ourselves for electricity, it's kind of expensive. But what we really own, we do have an absolute monopoly on is the distribution system. So we're going to make our money, more money at the distribution end. And, and that's where these, these, these in third parties, I mean, it's kind of an Enron game, that's what Enron is doing, is buying and selling blocks of power. You know, I mean, they're treating power like it was potato chips. They were buying big wads of it and selling it to other people and, you know? And I, you know, I just, the electricity's still coming from the same sources, it's going through the same processes. Through Sonoma Clean Power seems to, you know, they have, they have a executive director and 10 people, I mean, they've got a jillion people working for them. And maybe they've got a little lower cost of overhead of doing that balancing act, but I think, I think it's gonna be one of those things where PG&E is, it's gonna take them a few years to figure out how to minimize their exposure to this, but they're going to do it. And then, then I think, then I think this Clean Power deal is gonna try and sell itself on its greeniness or something, but it isn't gonna be able to do it on rate. So I don't know, I'm not, I think these things are a bunch of suede shoe guys that are playing around with a bunch of, you know, getting access to a bunch of customers through this process where you have to opt out. And I think that was a critical error in filling this deal up, because if you want choice, choice is to opt in, not opt out. Choice is, I want to buy your product, not that, no, I don't want to buy your product anymore. That's not choice. So I mean, I think it's, I think it's kind of based on a little game of smoke and mirrors, and I'm not gonna support it, because I think it's kind of.
Even if we could potentially save, just, I'm just saying as a city, not that we would choose to not opt out, but as a city, even if we could save money for two years by getting just on a purely business transaction for viewership?
Well, you tell me, you tell me, we've got a solar farm at the water plant. We have this situation right now, we're in this business right now, that we buy our power from the solar, the solar company for the water plant.
For less than PG&E.
And how much money have we saved?
Three percent.
Yeah.
Three percent.
You think?
No, it is.
No, it's a set rate.
No, I just don't believe it. You gotta show me the bills.
Okay, we can show you the bills.
I don't think you are.
And you have rebates too, don't you? I think we get yearly rebates on the electricity that we sell back to PG&E.
Anyway, I think it's, you know, I get it, I get it. And I've got a pretty good-sized power bill. Would I like to lower my power bill? I probably, you know, I have a pretty substantial power bill every month. I'd like it to be less, but I just, I think that as fast as you make these things, they're gonna plug the holes, but.
You make it great.
Well, you know, I. I just think you need to have a little more, you know, it's not bad, it's not necessarily bad, but it's, I don't know how you, you know, it helps, you know, kind of deconstruct PG&E, and is that a good thing? I don't know. PG&E's pretty easy to be, it's pretty easy to be negative about them, but they've supplied, you know, they've been a pretty good provider to, of infrastructure, and you tear them apart, they've been doing it to themselves for a long time, so, I don't, I'm sorry, Babylon, let's call a vote.
Is this just? Councilmember Stransky?
Yes.
Yes.
Madrigal?
Yes.
Orinstine?
No.
Mayor Burden?
No. I think that's our last item, the ordinance follows?
Right.
Do we need a separate action on that?
Yes. Okay, we tried to do it, it's two-for-one. Does someone else, I've made a lot of motions, I'm fine with someone else doing it.
I'll move that we adopt the ordinance.
And waive the reading of it.
And waive the reading.
I want to read it. Please, let's read it.
Okay, motion, Sandy, comment on the ordinance, it's just a boilerplate that follows the motion. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember?
Yes.
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Orinstine?
Yes.
Mayor Burden?
No.
Is this just informational?
Yes.
Is this just informational for the council?
Yes.
Thank you.